All right. Thank you, Brian, and welcome everyone to this April 8, 2024, meeting of the Homewood City Council. The mayor has an announcement for us to start with tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, simply, I know we had a little bit of time before the meeting, but I wanted to introduce everybody to Brandon Sims, who is our new IT director. For those, for those of you who have not met him, Brandon, if you, do you want to say a few words? You're more than welcome to. But just wanted to make sure everybody puts a face with a name. So Brandon's already doing fantastic things for the city, so we're very glad he's here, but just wanted to, again, introduce you guys.
Well, hello, everyone. Again, my name is Brandon Sims. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you all in advance for all of the job security that is here. So, but, yeah, yeah. But we've jumped in and we've already started to develop a vision and a plan, so be looking forward to see some changes coming down, down the pipeline.
Thank you, Brandon. We are very happy to have you. All right, so I will go ahead and now call the meeting to order. We're going to start tonight with an invocation from Mr. Harden. Is that right?
Yes.
And that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for the world you've given us here in Homewood. I want to thank you for the, for the city council and for our, for the people who work for the city of Homewood, and thank you mostly for the citizens of Homewood who don't always agree with everything we do, but they really care. And that's, Lord, what I think is important here. We want to be grateful for all you've given us for this wonderful city, and please continue to bless us. Amen.
Everyone will face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harden. Mr. Seacrest, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gwaltney.
Here.
Geer.
Here.
Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Nels.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
All right, so we got full house tonight. Next is the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of March 20, 2024. Those have previously been distributed. I'd entertain a motion, a second for, to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As are approved 11 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. Where am I going to start? Let's start with Ward 1 Beautification Board. I believe we got one applicant for one of the spots. You want me to let you do it? It's your, you're the liaison.
Yes, we received one candidate. So we would like to, one, reopen a position until April 22nd, and, two, we would like to appoint, Bo, you have the, the name. Is it, is it Mr. McCurdy?
Yes, Mr. McCurdy, if I'm pronouncing this right. Sin- Sintron?
Sintron.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it goes by Ron.
Okay, even better.
I would like, we would like to appoint Ron McCurdy, Ward 1, and all, for beautification board.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Sims. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Geer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Congratulations to Mr. McCurdy. And then we will open that, the other Ward 1 Beautification Board position until April 22 at 4:30. We also need to reopen the Ward 2 BZA appointment, or position. We will reopen that until April 15 at 4:30. We also have Ward 4 Park Board position that I believe we have four candidates for?
We do, we do. So we're going to need to set interviews for that. And I know that there might be some interviews for...
Yeah, so the week of the 15th, there are going to be some, we're going to get to that. There's going to be some school board interviews. So if we could avoid that, that would be great.
Yeah.
At least that Wednesday, I think, is what y'all are looking at, so.
Okay, so.
If you wanted to do them this coming week, that would be great.
Yeah. Mr. Seacrest, is there a way for you to get in touch with those four candidates and see if maybe they could interview either Wednesday evening, or, I can do Thursday evening, but it would need to, they need to start at like 5:30 because I have a...
What week is that?
This week.
This week. Yeah, the 11th, 10th and 11th, 10th or 11th, can we try?
I'll reach out first thing in the morning.
Okay, all right, yeah. So we'll see, and if that doesn't work, we'll figure it out from there.
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good. We also have Ward 4 Library Board that is still open until the 22nd. And then lastly, we have the Ward 2 Board of Education position that we will open until next Monday, April 15 at 4:30, just so everyone's aware, because we got to do this in April by statute. So just so everyone's aware, the Ward 2 reps have identified April 17, starting at 5 o'clock, for any interviews, assuming that we get multiple candidates. So you can go ahead and mark your calendar for that. All right. We do have two additions to the agenda tonight. The first is to committee referral. It is 120424, request for consideration to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Carr, Riggs, and Ingram for accounting work. This is my item, and it'll go to Finance. The second one is to other new business. It's 130424, request for consideration to change bank signatures, brought to us by J.J. Bischoff. We'll deal with that one tonight. With those two additions, I would entertain a motion, a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved to the second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 11 to 0. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's fine. Everybody thinks I'm a guy, anyway. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, no, let's do that at the end. Yeah, thank you, though. That's okay. All right, let's do other, old, new, old business agenda first. Okay. First item, 110224, bid opening for April 22, 2024, at 4:45 p.m. for fires, facilities, maintenance bid. It's brought to us by Deputy Chief Broadhead. We're going to carry that item over for the bid opening on the 22nd. Next item, 090324, request for consideration of budget amendments for fiscal year 2324. This is also brought to us by Deputy Chief Broadhead and J.J. Bischoff. We'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on April 1. That's not April Fool's Joke. We met at 5 o'clock, and after hearing from Deputy Chief Broadhead, we voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval.
All right, so we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2438. Next item, 100324, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for Fire Station 3 addition, also brought to us by Deputy Chief Broadhead, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met and voted 3 to 0 to approve this item.
All right, so we have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2439. Next item, 110324, request for consideration of no parking, striping, and signage near 1665 28th Avenue South, brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Gwaltney?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, and after hearing from Mr. Smith, the council voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of the item. The motion was made by Councilor Nels and approved by, or, sorry, seconded by Counselor Jones.
All right, so we have a motion from Public Safety, but, Mr. Kendrick, will you give us the first reading?
Yes, it's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood, on and along a portion of 28th Avenue South in the city, and to provide for penalties therefor. Section 1, it should be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park and motor vehicle on and along that portion of 28th Avenue South near 1665 28th Avenue South, as depicted in Exhibit 8, attached here to Section 2. A violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1 to say of the Code of Ordinances. Section 3, the chief of police, for the city's authorized and direct-to-direct installed calls, installed markings, as identified in Exhibit 8, on and along that portion of 28th Avenue South. Section 4, if any part of provision, ordinance declared beyond constitutional, by a court of companies jurisdiction, and all other parts not affected thereby, should remain in full force and effect. Section 5, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council, on approval by the mayors, or otherwise becoming law.
Make a motion for, and, Ms. Kendrick? All right, so a motion from Mr. Sims.
Second.
Second from Mr. Alamon, and a roll call vote, please. Mr. Seacrest?
Yes, sir. Counselor Gwaltney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so we have unanimous consent. I would entertain now a motion, a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gwaltney, second by Ms. Nels, and another roll call vote, please. Mr. Seacrest?
Yes, sir. Counselor Gwaltney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2440. Next item, 130224, reschedule public hearing for tonight at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of a sign variance at 1706 Oxmore Road, brought to us by Jenny Levens of Goody's Toy Store and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, this has been a while because we had this originally in committee on March the 4th, and we voted to send this item out without recommendation pending the public hearing, which was supposed to have been on March 25, but is now tonight. And the motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, I'll go and open the public hearing. I see we've already got someone at the podium. If you will, just tell us your name, and I saw you already signed in, but just tell us your name and, and what you're proposing.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Joe Levens. My wife, Jenny Levens, is the author, I guess, of the request for the variance. We own Goody's Toy Store, which is, I think the address is actually 3027 Oxmore. I apologize for that. But essentially, what it is, is about a five-and-a-half, six-foot old-school carousel horse that you would see, you know, at the zoo that you ride on. That is our logo as the toy store. Looks pretty much like that. If I can step away, I realize I'm like the microphone. It's going to go right on top of where the hero sign is. That, that brick awning that you see, actually, the roof actually sits a little bit below it, so the base of the carousel will only go about four or five feet above the actual roof line that you can visibly see from the street. Really, it's, it's sort of a marketing campaign for us. It simply matches our logo. It makes the store visible for customers, potential customers. It's very attractive as you drive down the street. It's not a nice or anything like that. We kind of view it very similar to the ice cream cone that you see on Edgewood Creamery downtown in the Strip. It's just a similar emblem of the store. And so we'd love a variance to put it up. It doesn't weigh very much. I can lift it myself, so there's no structural concerns. But I'm happy to answer any questions, and appreciate you doing that.
Let me do this real quick. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not, then I will close the public hearing. Let me ask this logistics question first, because we need to make sure we've got it right for the resolution if this passes. Do we, are we sure about the address, what the correct address is?
That's the reason it says 3027 based on...
Got it.
That's the correct one.
With it we re-advertize? Perfect. Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Harden?
Let's pretend you decide to move from there. Are you willing to proffer to take that down when it's time for you to leave that building?
Absolutely. We'll be glad to take it down if we move locations, yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
I do have one more question. So are you saying that it's going to go on the top of the building, or on this, on the level and front of the sign? It's going to actually go on the top of the building, right?
Yes, it'll go on top. We're that arrows.
And when you...
It'll go above where the hero logo is.
And when you said something about the platform being a few feet above, above what?
So if you, if you imagine, the very top row of brick above hero, imagine it sits like this, that the street is over here and the roof is here. The roof actually drops below that brick line.
Behind it.
Behind it, correct, yeah. So that the carousel will sit here and then extend. And so you, you actually probably wouldn't even see the base of the carousel.
So are you securing that to the roof?
Yes, so there'll be a platform, and then it will be strapped to the platform, which will be either welded or anchored by screws to the roof. Yes.
As long as your landlord's happy.
Since, since the ice cream cone was brought up, that's a really old symbol, isn't it? Or is that something that was, go ahead, Walter?
I was just going to say, the, that's a, not above the roof line. And so that was part of the, the new development when Edgewood had the revitalization, and they added that.
It's old.
It's not above, it's not above the roof.
Walter's the only one that can probably answer that question. Does that give you any indication?
Wyatt, Wyatt, what is the variance we're considering?
Yes, the ordinance restricts the height of roof signs such that they cannot extend beyond the highest peak of the roof.
Okay, got it.
So if you had a roof, say, like the roof was angling down, and you had a roof sign here, as long as it didn't extend up above that highest peak, it would be okay. But in this case, since it's on the parapet, it extends up, obviously, so it's a variance.
And since you said it's, I know you said it's light enough for you to lift by yourself, how are y'all going to get it up there?
So there's actually, there's actually a stairwell back behind, and so we'll, we'll dolly it up there and kind of roll it over to the location, yes.
Okay, just curious.
I had a quick question. Do we already have a sense of what the actual logo looks like on the building already? I mean, in terms...
It's already on there.
If it's already, I mean, I just want to, in terms of visibility?
It looks just like, it looks like the hero sign.
Like right there, right above where the hero is, is that, is that?
No, it's where the hero is. It says goodies where hero is. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Can you pull it down, Brian? It's, it's to the left.
Yeah, there it is. That's what it looks like.
The horse in that picture with the goodies is not there. That's what this was.
Right. No, the horse is not there yet.
Correct. Okay, so it just says goodies.
Right, just the goodies sign.
Goodies is where a horse is.
Yes, because he was waiting for tonight before they put this on.
I have an image of the goodies on my Instagram, if anyone would like to see it on my phone. I realize it's pretty elementary to walk around and hand it to you, but I do have that, if that would help.
Cool. And I just had one more question. When we met, did you mention that you might paint something on the side of the building, or is that, am I remembering wrong?
No, we haven't painted anything. We, we do have signage in the windows that was pre-approved and has been put up. It matches the logos that were on there, but there's nothing on the side of the buildings.
Okay.
All signs are painted sign. Maybe that's what you were thinking of. It was. Isn't that correct? Where it says goodies, isn't that painted?
There's a goodies where the hero was, but on the, on the, yes, and that is painted. Yes, yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, and a second from Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Is that two no's? Okay, so that is nine to two, and will be Resolution 2441. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, 030324, public hearing set for tonight for authorization to repeal ordinance 2813 flood damage prevention ordinance and replace it with floodplain development ordinance as required by FEMA. This is brought to us by Cale Smith, and we'll start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus?
Okay. After hearing from Cale Smith, the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval. The motion was made by Counselor Andy Gwaltney and seconded by Counselor Nick Sims.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I will go and open the public hearing. I see Mr. Smith is already there. If you will, just give us a brief recap of what we're doing here.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I did a great job last week explaining what this ordinance, what the purpose of it is. So I just wanted to share a few other comments in addition to those that I made last week. Since Homewood joined the NFIP in the late 90s, we've had a CRS rating of nine. And so that's like the lowest that you can go. If you fall out of a nine, then you're out of the NFIP. Our goal this year is to get to an eight. So at a nine, we, folks that live in Homewood that are in the floodplain, get a 5% reduction in their flood insurance premiums, and an eight would get us to 10% reduction in flood insurance premiums. And we get those credits by, the most important would be in this floodplain ordinance, but then also things like public mailers, having flyers at our public buildings, things like that. Having Sherry as a, as a floodplain manager, certified floodplain manager gets us credit. So it's different credits that Shoal Engineering is helping us identify, and Sherry is helping us identify. And then we'll combine all those to our recertification, which happens this summer. So this ordinance, coupled with all those other credits that we get, will hopefully get us to an eight, or at least keep us at a nine.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I had two.
Yep.
Mr. Smith, are we at risk of falling out of being a nine?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. And, second, what's the cost to the city between, is there additional salary required for her to take on that task, I assume, with the personnel board, the way it's structured there would be?
For her to, what does that mean?
For Sherry to take on the additional responsibilities of managing the floodplain?
She is, she is currently a certified floodplain manager. So she's, she's had that certification since she's been here.
Okay. What other costs to the city are we looking at? Just out of curiosity, if you could estimate?
Just probably some mailers. We get the pamphlets from FEMA for free.
Okay.
And so we just deliver those to the library.
Oh, so relatively low cost. Awesome.
It's low-hanging fruit, yep.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Kendrick, would you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir, this is a 58-page ordinance, so I will do my best. Division 1 deals with generally, provides for statutory authorization, finding of facts, and statement of purpose and objectives. Division 2 deals with general provisions, lands to which the ordinance applies, basis of special floodplain areas, establishment of a floodplain development permit, compliance, obligation, and greater restrictions, interpretation, warning, and disclaimer of liability, penalties for violation, and saving clause, and repealer. Division 3 deals with administration, designation of floodplain administrator, permit, procedures, duties, and responsibilities of the floodplain administrator. Division 4 deals with provisions of floodplain hazardous reduction. It sets out general standards, specific technical standards, floodways, building standards for streams without base flood elevations, standards for areas of shallow flood zones, standards for subdivisions and other developments in the critical facilities. Division 5 deals with variance procedures, designation of variance, and appeals board, duties of the board, conditions for variances, variances procedures, variances for historical structures, variances notifications and records. Division 6 has definitions applies to the ordinance.
All right, thank you very much. I would now entertain a motion, a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nels, and a roll call vote, please. Mr. Seacrest?
Yes, sir. Counselor Gwaltney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
So that's 11 to 0. So now I'd entertain a motion, a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Gwaltney, second from Ms. Geer, and another roll call vote, please. Mr. Seacrest?
Yes, sir. Counselor Gwaltney?
Yes, sir.
Geer?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nels?
Yes.
Andrus?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. So that is 11 to 0 as well, and will be ordinance 2895. All right, next item, 040324, public hearing set for April 22, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of an amendment to the final development plan for Sanford University, 800 Lake Shore Drive. The site address is 849 Montague Drive. To permit the proposed construction of a new three-story addition to the existing north parking deck that would expand the current structure and add an additional 550 parking spaces as a means to accommodate the university's on-campus parking needs. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of 5 to 0 favorable recommendation. So we will carry that item over for the public hearing at our next meeting. Which brings us to our amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion, a second for approval of that amended agenda.
So, second.
All right, motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Gwaltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 11 to 0, which brings us to other new business, 100424, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a final development plan at 232 Greensprings Highway for Bank of America to permit the construction of a 4,235-square-foot single-story branch bank, as well as associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of 6 to 0 to 1 favorable recommendation. Mr. Kendrick, I forgot what, when I can...
June? May 13?
May 13. Okay, so we will set that for May 13 at 6:00 p.m. All right, next item, 110424, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of March 12, 2024 through April 8, 2024. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. This was a group effort this week, so Mr. Gwaltney and Ms. Smith and I worked through them, and so I believe we covered everything. So I would move for approval of vouchers, and I want to thank Ms. Smith for stepping in and...
I would, and I would second that motion.
We worked her.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Mr. Gwaltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2442. Last item, 130424, request for consideration to change bank signatures, brought to us by J.J. Bischoff. This is, obviously, we've had some retirements, so we need to change some signatures. So that's, that's all this is, and we need to get it done. So I would entertain a motion, a second for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Gwaltney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2443. All right, so with that, we'll go into our comments. Mr. Mayor, you got anything tonight?
Nothing.
All right, Mr. Gwaltney?
Sorry, didn't look through the list here. I do not believe I need to set Public Safety. I do not need to set Public Safety, so I have no other comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Geer?
Yes, so just to bring to everybody's attention, you have a press release that George from the Arts Council left for everyone to look over tonight. They're very excited about having Steve Skipper present his first public exhibit, beginning next Thursday night downstairs, from 5 to 7. And so he is a Rosedale resident, and he grew, grew up here from Homewood. This is, this is some of his art. He is not formally trained, yet he was named United States Sports Academy Artist of the Year last year. He is the official portrait artist for the University of Alabama football team. He has numerous accolades and just a self-spoken lovely gentleman. He has also been commissioned by Buckingham Palace to do a portrait of Queen Elizabeth and Princess Anne. That's going to be unveiled this year. Anyway, it's a really big deal, and his good friend Eric Essex is going to be joining us for some music. So anyway, I'll, I'll send the press releases, the official press releases, to each of you. You can put them on your social media, and we're very excited. And thank you, George, and the Arts Council for bringing that to us.
Thank you very much. It's very exciting.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I was going to go back to you. You do have an item.
I scanned too quickly. I would like to set public safety immediately following finance.
All right.
Sorry. Sorry to disappoint anyone.
No problem. All right, Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, enjoyed watching the Final Four and seeing Alabama play in the Final Four tournament, and that's it. Appreciate you all, roll tide.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton.
I don't have anything for committee?
No, you didn't.
Correct?
You didn't.
Oh, did I miss that?
[inaudible].
Yep.
Okay, got it, perfect. All right, after public safety. Do we, I guess I just want to ask, do we have a date yet for the basketball game, Mayor?
No.
Not yet, okay, all right. Gotcha. Yeah, I had a chance to run into Robbie a couple times the last month. I think he's a gem for our city and for the exceptional foundation, but also just everything that he does in the community. He helped run a bunch of soccer stuff for Jefferson County Schools at the Mega Field about three weeks ago, and then last weekend they had a ex-ed basketball event at J. Valley High School. So Robbie was out there keeping, keeping the brackets under wraps and refereeing through some pretty stiff competition, to be honest with you. Some of those guys might be on the, on the basketball teams at their respective high schools, so. And then I just wanted to thank Andy. On Saturday, I was pretty parched, my voice is still shot, but his daughter was finishing up the soccer game, and while he was picking up his Powerade, he said, hey, do you want one of these? Because he saw that I was about to start coaching, coaching my son's team, so thank